Please rise, meeting to come to order. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Irving. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Wassler.
Here.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Here.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
With approval, adjourn the meeting of July 26, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say motion carries. General is approved. At this time, move to suspend the rules in order for the presentation of a proclamation by the county executive Steve Stanger. Does he?
He is.
We'll come back to that as soon as he gets your... You okay with that, Susan, for a few minutes? All right, thank you. Okay. No bid openings, remove the communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, sixth district.
Receive file and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Item number two, sixth district.
Same for item number two.
So ordered.
Item number three, third district.
Receive and file, the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Mr. Chair, we have nothing on road and bridge matters this evening, so we'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one, all districts.
Receive file and county councilor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation. That will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive and file, same motion for item number three, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receive file and county councilor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six, sixth district.
Same motion.
Not for six.
Oh, it's not, I'm sorry. Receive file and deposit agreement and the subdivision plan be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say motion carries.
Item number seven, first district.
Receive, file, and refer to the county councilor, to the Department of Planning, to the Department of Revenue, and to the Board of election commissioners.
So ordered.
Item number eight.
At this time, we'll hold on... At this time, and move to suspend the rules in order for presentation of a proclamation by county executive Steve Stanger in honor of the Housing Authority of St. Louis County's summer literacy program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say motion carries. Rules are suspended at this time. County Executive Steve Stanger, if you'd like to present your proclamation to Ms. Susan Rollins of the Housing Authority.
Sure. I'd like to read the proclamation and to acknowledge the fine work that Susan has done here. Whereas the summer literacy program was first implemented by Housing Authority Director Susan Rollins in 2015 in an effort to give children living in public housing developments equal access to learning opportunities. And in its second year, volunteers including public housing residents and St. Louis County library staff read to children and instill in them the love of reading, which creates an enthusiasm that will pay off in their performance in school. And a fully functioning library is stocked with books that have been donated by the St. Louis County Library and other partners, and also provides books for children to keep so they can start their own collection. And whereas the literacy rates of participating children are increased at an astounding rate with tests showing that almost 90% are reading at least one grade level above their current grade, and almost 45% are reading two grade levels higher. And whereas the efforts of the Housing Authority of St. Louis County's summer literacy program illustrate a key priority of St. Louis County, namely invest in our youth. Now therefore, I, Stephen V. Stanger, St. Louis County Executive, on behalf of the people of St. Louis County, congratulate the summer literacy program and hereby proclaim August 9, 2016, as Housing Authority of St. Louis County's Summer Literacy Program Day. And if I can tell the council and our audience this evening, I visited one of our Housing Authority locations, and I think I recognize some of the kids here tonight, and they've actually created some artwork that I'd like to display throughout the county. They created this individually. And I went and I read with them, and I experienced just exactly the atmosphere that's created by this program, and it really is incredible. And we read books together, we talked, we had conversations about what the kids wanted to be when they grew up and what they wanted to be when they were older, and it ranged from anywhere from they wanted to play sports, they wanted to become doctors. And this program truly, I think, really assists in instilling in them a love of learning and of reading, and I think it's really important, and we'd really like to expand this, Susan. And it really took seeing it firsthand to really grasp, and I would encourage everyone on the council to do the same, and I'd be happy to go with you. We could do it together. It really is incredible, and I commend you, Susan, for this program and all of your assistance and your volunteers and everybody who's helped. It's quite a program. So with that... Susan, thank you very much. Anything you'd like to say?
On behalf of the Housing Authority of St. Louis County, I would just like to say thank you. This is amazing. You have before you today our children, we have our mother who is just a volunteer extraordinaire, Mrs. Bass is here today, we also have our teachers and other volunteers, and we have our pastor with us as well. Helen Holliday is a member of the Housing Authority staff, and Helen has been working on this, and it's my dream to lead this, the Housing Authority, that our children have an opportunity to read, and as Executive County Executive said, to have the opportunity to excel in their lives. So now they have their own library where they take up books, and they'll continue to read throughout the year, and I hope that we can do an after-school program that just will go on forever, because these are the people of the future, and we want to make sure that they have a great opportunity. Thank you so much.
Susan.
Put this way again. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. Thank you.
All right, back to communications.
Yes, sir. Item number eight.
Move to approve the appointment as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say motion carries.
Item number nine.
Receive file and county councilor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 11, and that will be the order.
Item number 12.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 13.
Receive file and county councilor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 16, and that will be the order.
Item number 17, fifth district.
Receive file and county councilor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 23, first district.
Same motion through item number 24.
So ordered.
Item number 25.
Move to approve the appointments as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say motion carries.
Item number 26.
Drop from the order of business, and that will be the order. Add-ons, please.
No add-ons this evening, Mr. Chair.
County Executive?
Nothing further to report this evening.
Report to special committees, move to the public forum.
We have eight speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Please keep our comments to three minutes, and please state your name and address, please.
First speaker this evening is Katie Doherty.
Katie Doherty, Justice Services, 100 South Central. Good evening. We've been here every month for the past nine months, and I'm sure you're all sick of my face up here talking to you, and for that I apologize to a degree. What more can we say? We're beating a dead horse, we know that, so why are we here again? We could remind you of the physical assaults that we face every day, we could remind you of the emotional toll that it takes to do our job, we could remind you of the psychological impact that our career has on us, we could remind you of the dangerous amounts of overtime we face, we could remind you of the 47% turnover rate, we could remind you that we're dozens of officers short because of this, literally dozens of officers short of what is supposed to be budgeted for us, which is a reason for these dangerous amounts of overtime. We could remind you that we have a PTSD rate that's almost 10 times higher than the general public, we could remind you that our suicide rate is 39% higher than any other profession, we could remind you of the depression, the insomnia, the divorce rates, the substance abuse, we could remind you of all that as we have been talking about every month, we could remind you of all that bad stuff that we face, like you hear from us every month. Or we could remind you that we're the only American Correctional Association jail accredited in the entire state of Missouri. We could remind you that in June, we passed this accreditation with 100% success rate because of these officers who are tired, we're shorthanded, and despite all of that, we operate at an excessively high ethical, physical, just emotional state than other places, even though we're paid significantly less. We could remind you that out of the 28,000 people we booked, we only had 50 use-of-force reports. We could also talk about the dozens of suicides that we've prevented or that we've intercepted in the middle of. We could remind you of the members of the general public who've recognized us at gas stations and grocery stores and shook our hands and told us they're rooting for us. We could talk to you about the police officers and the security officers that have shaken our hands after these meetings and told us that they're rooting for us. We could tell you all of these things every time, but what we really need is your support now. Everybody's rooting for us, and we need your support now. So we're asking that you allow us to come into a salary negotiations meeting. We've already submitted the request, we just need your support. Everybody else is behind us. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Is Adrian Corona? Adrian Corona?
Adrian Corona, 100 South Central. We'd first like to thank the various departments associated with ASME for sending representatives to support our cause. Their presence is not only appreciated but necessary to our success, so thank you all for attending. As we move closer to the finalization of the budget, we would like to take this time to review our position and reemphasize the importance of including a pay raise in this coming fiscal year. First, speaking towards the culture that has been created in St. Louis County, which is one that chooses to dismiss and disregard those who provide the various high-quality services for St. Louis County. There's no clearer evidence then than the grievance process we were forced to go through. Our entire department had a legitimate grievance that went unanswered. We waited patiently for months and still no formal answer. We were told in this room that this is the procedure. I've never seen a grievance procedure that does not require a formal answer. We did get a five-minute explanation in the hall from a man who felt that grievances do not solve anything. But the grievance was never the point, it is just one of many examples of how bad it has become for employees. We move on to the budget crisis that has plagued St. Louis County since 2008. Each year, the budget report is put out, and each year, there is a huge number in the projected loss column. However, these numbers are grossly overstated, and not only by a few dollars, but by tens of millions of dollars. So grossly overstated that in 2015, the projected loss went from $40 million to an astounding zero in actual loss, and this is a yearly occurrence. Posting these projected losses would make it easy to justify continuing the supposed wage freeze. Next, simple enough, St. Louis County has ample reserve to the tune of $118 million going by the zero loss in 2015 and the reported end-of-the-year balance in 2014. And if it were... And if we were in this huge financial bind, why have we not raised property taxes? Why have they decreased to an all-time low? If we needed to be saved or even helped, the council by law could have approved a tax increase at any time this year, but it was not necessary, so there was no tax increase. Of course, there is the alleged wage freeze. We have provided the council with 25 full pages containing all of the wage increases since 2008. For everyone not listening over the last seven months, the wage freeze never existed. The county was consistently handing out raises over the last eight years and continues to do so all the way up to this very moment, and will continue to do so past this time. Apparently, the wage freeze is for those whose wages the county chooses to freeze. Lastly, do we deserve a raise? Everyone knows of the risk of working corrections, and we have shown you the outcome of those risks. We have shown you the injuries, what the injuries look like, and how much damage one single inmate can do on a random day. This year, we once again have been accredited by the ACA, passing with 100% of all mandatory standards and 97% of all non-mandatory standards. We have provided classes, rehabilitation opportunities, and other services for those incarcerated. I would argue that we provide... I would argue that what is provided by us is far more than any other facility in the area. More importantly, we provide a safe environment for the inmates and other staff so that they can attend and provide these classes without fear of interruption. I got a few seconds.
Sure.
And lastly, what we've done here over these last few months, we have organized ourselves, we have attended these council meetings, we have paraded various officers in front of you to advocate for pay raises, we have sat in these rows, we have supported each other, and we have done all that as professionals. We look, act, and represent St. Louis County in a way that should not only to the... That should not... Should show not only the people in this room, but the entire community, that we are an outstanding department and that we deserve to be compensated for that. I hope that this impression that we have made is positive and that people can rest assured that this vital facility is in the most capable hands possible. Finally, if all decisions that are made are made in the spirit of what's best for the county, well, then that, ladies and gentlemen, would be a decision in our favor, because we are what's best for the county.
Thanks, Adrian.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is ASME the group that represents you?
Yes, yes, we are. We are.
Okay, and you sent a letter requesting and negotiating a meeting?
Yes, we sent a proposal in. I believe one of our community residents has sent it in, and so we would like to sit down and have a salary negotiation with the council or whoever may be involved.
And did you get a response?
Have we got a response yet, sir? We got a... Man, we got a phone call that our letter had been received, and that the county has supported a raise, it's just balancing a budget and looking forward to further discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Jim Worsh.
Good evening, now. I'm here to address the...
Can you just hold? We'll let the crowd, just so you're not disrupted. That'll give you the full three minutes, if that's all right with you. That way, we can hear you and you're not being interrupted. I think we're good to go.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Jim Worsh, and I'm here to talk about the proposed apartment complex at Bauer and 21, across the street from Canterbury Farms subdivision. I've been in Canterbury Farms for 18 years, and I'm very familiar with the traffic pattern. I just recently retired, so I know what rush hour traffics are like. Everyone familiar with the area that we've talked to believes strongly that the traffic study submitted to you is greatly flawed. Along our subdivision, like all homes along Bauer and Keller, we have only two ways to get out, Bauer to 21 and Keller to 21. During morning rush hour, particularly in the winter when vacations are low, the survey was in the spring, I've seen Bauer backed up from 21 to near Tammy Kay. Sometimes took two lights to turn on to 21, and that's today before any additional traffic. Very long lights today, timed at 1 minute 45 seconds each light, and that's due to the 21 traffic. The study assumed a large percentage of apartment residents would turn left onto Highway 21 without a traffic signal. Again, no one in the area believes this is rational. Traffic on 21 is too heavy. The only way... Well, if you add additional traffic from 400 parking places to morning rush hour, I believe that in Canterbury Farms, it's going to come right across from us. We wouldn't even have a way to get out of the subdivision turning left, it'll be backed up like that. Another consideration is the evening rush hour traffic. When you're heading north on 21, it takes two to four lights. I wrote down two to four lights. Tonight, I had to do it, it took me 18 minutes, five lights. Everything's timed to go southbound, they're trying to... You know, I can see why, they're trying to clear out 270, and they have a lot of people turning left on Madison before, so the lights are really, really, really bad going that way. So you're going to add a lot more traffic going northbound in the evening. One final note, I'm a trustee, the treasurer for Canterbury Farms subdivision. We have 57 homes. Last Sunday, I sent out an email asking them to vote on a $95 assessment to help fight this. I've already got 44 votes in favor of it. The only one not wanting to help fund the effort feels that the people will not be listened to, even though he does not want the apartments in the area.
Thank you, Jim.
Next speaker is Stephen Ticketcheck.
Hello. My name is Stephen Ticketcheck, and I'm a trustee at Saran Court. I would like to express my opposition to proposal PC 22-16 JHB Properties. I'm asking you to deny this proposal because of the severe impact it will have on the volume of daily and emergency vehicle traffic, both in and out of our properties along Bauer Road. All the homes along this corridor are totally dependent on the access to and from Tesson Ferry Road. Bauer Road is literally an extension of the driveway to my home. Because of our heavy demand on Tesson Ferry Road, it presents... It presently is a burden to exit left from Bauer on Tesson Ferry, six to seven cars per light maximum. With the timing of the traffic lights, it can often take as long as 10 minutes to aggress from Bauer to reach Highway 270, which is only one mile away. This proposal will likely make that situation permanently worse for all of us. I understand that the developer plans to add an additional left-turn lane going east on Bauer for a short distance between the traffic light and after the first bank driveway. This short distance will not alleviate the impact of the proposed additional traffic flow from the apartment complex exiting onto Tesson Ferry. This will become a nightmare with traffic backed up on Bauer Road. Of even more concern to me will be the opposite traffic flow west from Tesson Ferry Road onto Bauer. The developer proposed two entrances to the property along Bauer Road. See the blue dots on the map I provided. One is directly across Tammy Kay, and the other is located approximately 180 feet, which is nine car length from Tesson Ferry, but there is nothing in the proposal for an additional westbound lane along Bauer entering into this development or improvements to Bauer Road. Vehicles entering the apartment complex from Bauer will have to make a left turn across opposite-flowing traffic, potentially backing up, waiting for the light change. This will create gridlock where traffic may likely be backed up onto Tesson Ferry Road, waiting for the traffic turning left from Bauer into the complex. Phase two, which might be a pharmacy or some commercial development on the corner, will add to the congestion when making the left turn onto this cornered entrance. This is totally unacceptable and becomes even more complex when considering the possibility for the need of emergency vehicles access to the Bauer and Keller Road communities. This is because Bauer Road and Keller Road have no shoulders to accommodate the flow of emergency vehicle traffic. Finally, I wish to call to your attention to the second and third pages of the packet I presented to you. These pages refer to the planning commission recommendations provided to the council on January 4, 2011, in regard to the change of zoning and PEU for a nursing and assisted living home proposal on that site. These special conditions refer to improvements to Bauer Road that addressed community concerns that were expressed at that time and we still hold today. Legislation for these special conditions was introduced to the county council and passed on February 22, 2011. I ask you that... What change has... I ask you what has changed with this present project that obviates the legislation and those special conditions from being met? I urge Mr. O'Leary or the entire council to schedule a county council hearing on the 21 Bauer proposal so that we can discuss a more detailed and comprehensive explanation of our decision.
Thank you, Stephen.
Just so I'm understanding this correctly, isn't there an entrance into this off of Tesson Ferry as well, correct?
Correct. There's going to be an entrance in on Tesson Ferry Road, but I was just speaking of the condition on Bauer. Traffic leaving Tesson Ferry Road, making a left across two lanes of traffic going to a middle suicide lane or even lane is doable, but we feel that the majority of the traffic in the morning and in the evening, or in the morning is going to be making a left turn coming out of Bauer onto the traffic light, which would be safer. We moved there 21 years ago, did not have a traffic light, and it was atrocious getting in and out of that area. They put the traffic light up, and it was a safer thing, things have happened. So now I suspect that this group will take the safe way and avoid the traffic light.
Thanks.
Which of the 2010 recommendations haven't been met in this new proposal?
We haven't heard anything about sidewalks, we haven't heard anything about widening of the road and improvements to the street. We have the double left-hand turn lane, but that is going to be just three-car lengths past the exit and entrance from the first bank to the intersection. So it's just a convergent of one or two, three-car lengths that's going to make an additional left-hand turn. But driving this for the past 21 years, you get school traffic, which we don't believe was in the traffic studies, so it is backed up, and it takes one or two times to get through that intersection at present.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. Next.
Question, Chair? One more. You said that there was a proposal a while back for a nursing facility on this property?
Yes, there was, back in 2010, 2011.
And that was denied, or they backed out?
It was accepted. They set it up to... Everything was approved. It went from an R2 to an R6 zoning, and the nursing home got the go-ahead to proceed with the construction. They put up a trailer on the lot and invited people to come and commit themselves to buying into this apartment complex. They wanted to have some percentage, and I can't remember exactly what percentage it was, of buy-in before they were going to start building. They did not get that buy-in, and therefore, they abandoned that nursing home slash assisted facility.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Bill Cramper.
I am one of the residents whose family uses on a daily basis Bauer Road and the stoplight at Highway 21 to enter the world outside of our neighborhood. We almost would make multiple trips there per day. Now, I'm going to make some comments on the traffic report that was provided for this proposal. I spent 37 years practicing engineering in industry, and during that time, I had to review, report studies such as this, and I learned to look at the data being developed, the methodology, the assumptions made, and the conclusions. And I've reviewed this study at length, and I have some real problems with the study itself, and I'll elucidate on some of those. As someone said, Bauer is an old country road, not designed for the traffic, and as you've already heard, there are significant problems getting a left turn onto 21 off of Bauer. And essentially, almost all traffic on Bauer, eastbound Bauer, goes north. Very, very few goes north. And I think the biggest problem for traffic with the apartments will be seeing that the apartment dwellers, and as current users of Bauer, have safe access, safe way to go north on Bauer. As someone mentioned, there's two entry points from the entry-exit points for the proposed apartments, one on Bauer. They could very safely make a right turn and go east on Bauer, reach the stoplight at... Take advantage of the stoplight to go north on Bauer. It was accepted, they set it up to, everything was approved, it went from an R2 to an R6 zoning, and the nursing home got the go-ahead to proceed with the construction. They put up a trailer on the lot and invited people to come and commit themselves to buying into this apartment complex. They wanted to have some percentage, and I can't remember exactly what percentage it was, of buy-in before they were going to start building. They did not get that buy-in, and therefore they abandoned that nursing home slash assisted facility.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Bill Cramper.
I am one of the residents whose family uses on a daily basis Bauer Road and the stoplight at Highway 21 to enter the world outside of our neighborhood. We almost would make multiple trips there per day. Now, I'm going to make some comments on the traffic port, report that was provided for this proposal. I spent thirty-seven years practicing engineering in industry, and during that time I had to review reports, studies such as this, and I learned to look at the data being developed, the methodology, the assumptions made, and the conclusions. And I've reviewed this study at length, and I have some real problems with the study itself, and I'll elucidate on some of those. As someone said, Bauer is, is a old country road, not designed for the traffic, and as you've already heard, there are significant problems getting a left turn onto 21 off of Bauer. And essentially, almost, well, almost all traffic on Bauer, eastbound Bauer, goes north. Very, very few goes north. And I think the biggest problem for traffic with the apartments will be seeing that the apartment dwellers, and as current users of Bauer, have safe access, safe way to go north on Bauer. As someone mentioned, there's two entry points from the entry-exit points for the proposed apartments, one on Bauer. They could very safely make a right turn on, go east on Bauer, reach the stoplight at, take advantage of the stoplight to go north on Highway 21. The other exit would be just south of the current stoplight at Bauer, and this would be allowed in both right and left turns. To go north or south on 21 would be provided. Now, to do that, they would have to cross, as someone said, two lanes of southbound traffic, and they would probably end up idling in the center lane, the suicide lane, while they try to get a chance to blend into the northbound traffic. One thing that I found puzzling...
Your, your time is up, sir.
I'm sorry.
Your time is up.
Okay, can I just make one?
One quick comment.
One quick comment. I think that the study that was done does not properly reflect the traffic that this, the apartments will generate, and I would ask our councilman, Mr. O'Leary, and hopefully with the support of the rest of the council, to charter another study that takes a realistic look at what the, the traffic this will generate. I think the present study does not properly show the problems that the apartments propose.
Thank you, Bill. Next speaker, please.
William Corpecky.
Sure.
No, she announced another speaker. Now, I'm going to stick with our three minutes because...
My name is William James Corpecky. I live at 12-805 Canterbury Farms Drive. I'd like to make a short comment. At the last council meeting, it was noted that we had approximately fifteen hundred residents signing a petition against the proposed apartment complex. I would like you to know that since that time, we have collected many additional signatures. We now have in excess of two thousand signatures in opposition and continue to receive more every day. I urge you to recognize the extent of our concerns in the area of South County that we live in, and grant us a hearing of the issue before the entire county council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is William Hogan.
I was here two weeks ago, you may recognize me. I have a trustee at Sunset Metals subdivision, which is off Keller Road, Keller, Rudgeon, and Bauer. And two weeks ago, I spoke to you about the difficulty we expected in gathering twenty-five percent of the landowners' signatures surrounding the process, the comp, the complex, so that we could have a formal county council hearing on that matter. I'm here today to update you on the actual process that took place. I think we're the first ones in the county that had actually filed this process. I have a handout for you that I'd like to pass out.
I'll take that, sir. Thank you.
And I want to refer to that, if you could. The handout, you can see the facts on how the county process, I believe, is broken and needs to be fixed, especially in our case. We attempted to comply with the provisions which require that we collect notarized signatures within ten days of twenty-five percent of all the landowners within, of all these property within one thousand feet of the project. As shown on the handout, there are a total of one hundred and forty-six land parcels comprising the one thousand foot region around the project. The project itself has a thin black line about, around, it's right in the center of the map. Single-family residents comprise one hundred and five of the one forty-six parcels, that's the blue regions on the chart. This consists of seventy-one percent of all the parcels, but only twenty-one percent of the land area, or about two point six million, or roughly twelve million square foot area. We need to get, to get twenty-five percent, to reach that number, we need almost three million, right around three million dollars, three million square feet. But that's impossible to attain, given the small, single-family residence area in the, to begin with. Nevertheless, we proceeded with the collection of signatures, even in recognition that the other twenty-nine percent of the parcels and seventy-nine percent of the land area is either commercial, apartments, non-residential, are vacant and up for sale for development. As expected, not a single landowner in this category would sign the petition in opposition, not one. Their interest is in expanding their businesses and in developing the property that's available for sale. Gathering notarized signatures within a ten-day period is horrendous, nearly impossible. But we did this because we wanted you to recognize how important the issue is to our residents. We secured the signatures of opposition for eighty-four residents, which is about eighty percent of all our residents. We could have got, we had six residents that didn't sign, weren't interested in anything.
Thanks, three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Always, we, we could have gotten ninety-five percent of the opposition, but fifteen percent were on vacation.
Need to wrap it up.
Okay. I don't blame you guys for the process, it's broken, but I blame you guys if you don't give us a chance to fix it, and I blame you guys by, by, by not providing us the opportunity to have a hearing before the council. I would say.
Thank you, William.
Next speaker is Wendy. And, Mr. Chair, I'll need to ask the speaker to spell her last name for me.
Hi, last name is Antalik, A-N-T-A-L-I-K.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Wendy Antalik, 10464 Star Hill Drive, I live on the next road over. I also question the traffic study. First bank on a Friday or Saturday is our busiest days. I looked at a satellite view, ten cars parked in front of the bank, forty in the parking lot. I would also like to point out at the Elks Lodge, they hold fourteen to fifteen activities per month, a lot of activity. Plus, it's a polling place, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one registered voters. Thirty percent turnout means five hundred and fifty-five voters on Bauer Road during elections. I question the future development of two point two acres on Bauer, what the impact on that traffic. Also like to point out, there used to be a large apartment complex at Kennerly and Tesson Ferry. Guess what? Those apartments were turned into condos. The apartments weren't wanted. So I'm asking you to preserve, there's three contiguous streets with large lots, Kennerly, Schusler, and Bauer. People want that amenity. It's better for the environment, more trees, less pollution. So I'm asking you, please, we just don't want the apartments, we're not opposed to development, and there are more unique development opportunities that have more class, and it blends better with the community. I'd be more than happy to work with anyone. I've looked at several designs, and folks, they're out there, they're beautiful. No to two hundred and thirty-two apartments, please keep this little pocket of South County that's like Ladue, Frontenac, Towne, Wildwood. Why lose that one small pocket? It's the only one remaining. We're losing wildlife. We have white squirrels off Schusler. It's beautiful, please, I ask you, preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
That's the final speaker, Mr. Chair.
Introduction to bills.
Bill number 176, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to forty-four thousand dollars from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same support of the St. Louis County Direct Court, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 177, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the St. Louis Jefferson Solid Waste Management District, appropriating the support of a regional household hazardous waste collection program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 178, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with high legal plans incorporated, with the provision of optional legal assistance services insurance to county employees, and further authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with legal shield to provide identity theft protection services to, to county employees. Bill number 179, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute contracts for media bias promoting recycling among residents and businesses in North County. Bill number 180, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, an ordinance authorizing and giving preliminary approval to an amended planned environment unit development of attractive land located in the R6 Residence District, subject to conditions PC-22-16 JH Properties Incorporated. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Hold, please, that'll be the order.
Bill number 169, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for perfection of bill number 169. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries, bill number 169 is perfected.
Bill number 170, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for perfection of bill number 170.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries, bill number 170 is perfected.
Bill number 171, introduced by Councilmembers Erby and O'Meara.
I move for perfection of bill number 171.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries, bill number 171 is perfected.
Bill number 172, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of bill number 172.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries, bill number 172 is perfected.
Bill number 173, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for perfection of bill number 173.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries, bill number 173 is perfected.
Bill number 174, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for perfection of bill number 174.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries, bill number 174 is perfected.
Bill number 175, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill number 175.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries, bill number 175 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold, bill number 116.
The order.
Bill number 161, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for final passage, bill number 161.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 161, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 161 is finally passed.
Bill number 162, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for final passage, bill number 162.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 162, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 162 is finally passed.
Bill number 163, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for final passage, bill number 163.
Aye, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 163, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 163 is finally passed.
Bill number 164, introduced by Councilmember Page, for Councilmember Harder.
I move that we, for final passage of bill number 164.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 164, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 164 is finally passed.
Bill number 165, introduced by Councilmember Page, for Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 165.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 165, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 165 is finally passed.
Bill number 166, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move for final passage of bill number 166.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 166, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 166 is finally passed.
Bill number 167, introduced by Councilmember Page, for Councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of bill number 167.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 167, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 167 is finally passed.
Bill number 168, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for final passage, bill number 168.
Second.
Roll call, please.